Good morning, Ron. You there?
Good morning, everyone.
It's good. Hey, we've got about four minutes by my clock, so we'll, I'll put this on mute for a few minutes and then I'll come back to you.
Sounds good.
Commissioner Cherry, we're just waiting on Commissioner French who just stepped out for a second.
Okay.
Okay, Chairman. Cherry, you're ready to go.
Good morning, everyone. This is Monday, October 25th, 2021. This is a Humboldt County Board of Commissioners special meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Tipton, would you like to lead us?
Of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, delivered in just as.
Well, everyone, I'm in extremely good mood today. The rain finally came, and it came with vengeance, and green grass is starting to grow. It's a rancher's dream, so. Here we go.
You didn't have any hay on the ground, huh?
Not a bit. All right, the meeting will start with public comment. Is there anyone in general public who'd like to make comment regards to this? On anything, actually. Not hearing none? So we'll move on to to item four, which is Humboldt County Comment on the Proposed Mountain Home Air Force Base Aerospace Optimization for Readiness Draft Environmental Impact Statement. Consideration Discussion Possible Approval of the Humboldt County Commission's Comment Letter to the Aerospace Optimization for Readiness Draft Environmental Impact Statement to be Signed by Chairman Ron Cherry for Discussion and Possible Action. County Manager, if you want to begin this?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. Dave Mindiola for the record. I've also got Jeremy Drew from Resource Concepts is on the line with us here. So as you know, we learned of this draft EIS from Mountain Home Air Force Base, and what they're trying to do is do an optimization of the airspace that they have currently. And so they're making some recommendations of lower altitude flying and some different things. We, of course, have a number of concerns about that. We voiced that in a letter back in August when we first heard of this. Now we've got an open comment period, and I reached out to Jeremy. Jeremy has been heavily involved with mountain, or not, excuse me, Fallon Naval Air Station. That expansion of that area out there, so I thought at least he'd have the basis for, you know, what the Air Force and Navy tried to do with these things. And he has put together some draft comments, which I think were sent out to you on, well, actually, they were attached to the agenda, but then we updated them a little bit, and we sent out another copy on Friday. And then also, there's a document, a supporting document, which goes category by category from this section, which Jeremy refers to in the letter. So with that, what I'd like to do is maybe ask Jeremy to just provide some background and comment and thoughts. Jeremy?
Sure. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. For your record, Jeremy Drew, Principal Resource Specialist at Resource Concepts. I chair the, share the chair's comments to open the meeting. I don't know whether to build an ark at this point over here or do a backflip because I'm so happy. So good for Nevada. Hopefully, we don't end up with Alpine County and Douglas County by the time this is all through. So Chairman, if you'd like what I can do, obviously, you all have the letter, and I'm happy to answer questions. If I can share my screen, what I could do is step through just a couple of items in the EIS itself and kind of give you a better visual as to what the, the Air Force is trying to do here, if that would be acceptable to the Chair and the Commissioners?
Yeah, I think so. That would be a good idea.
Okay, so do you see the screen that has July 2021 at the top?
I do.
Okay, what I'll do is I'll just kind of scroll backwards in terms of what they're proposing, and that'll give you a better context, I think, for where we're coming at with the letter. And what the Air Force is really trying to do is maximize where they can do their low-altitude training, or as they call it, their, their low, low-at. If you'll see in this kind of pop-out table to the right, it shows their different categories and how their airspace really, you know, drops clear down to 100 feet above ground level for their Category Three. Of note, their Category One qualification, the 500 to 1,000 feet above ground level is kind of their minimum that's required for all the air crews. At this point, the only airspace they have that meets the Category One or Three criteria really is over on the Oahu side. And so I think that's what they're trying to do, is basically make their entire airspace meet their highest category for the, the low-at training. And so that's, I think, the primary driver behind what they're trying to do here. What I'll do is try and step to a couple maps that show that more visually. This is kind of one of their issues as well. Not only do they want to be able to do the low-at training across all their airspace, but when they come out or into the Oahu MOA Military Operating Area into Paradise, they've got to step up pretty significantly because it's currently 10,000 feet above mean sea level, or I think 3,000 feet above ground level. So above those peaks, it actually kicks up closer to 13,000. They're trying to eliminate that shelf as well. One thing to note here is that they do, and it's not completely clear to me, but they do show some of the existing flight restrictions they have. And you'll see in the Oahu North, they have a lot of different categories of flight restrictions. You know, this has to do with anything from communities to wildlife values and concerns that they're trying to avoid. And one of note, way up on the north end of Humboldt County, is that they do have a three nautical mile and 1,500-foot above-ground-level avoidance area around McDermott. And that's something I think we, we may want to propose and kind of have suggested around Orvada or some of the ag areas in Paradise Valley. But this map just kind of shows that they do have the capability of implementing some specific flight restrictions to address some of our concerns, which to this point, they haven't. The other thing that was a little bit surprising to me that I didn't pick up in their initial presentations or the, you know, kind of the overview calendar, is that they also have these, what they call military training routes or MTRs, and those are the areas in blue. And so those are actually corridors where they can fly down to 100-foot above-ground level right now. And of interest on that is it actually crosses US 93 and some of the other state routes and generally goes right over Orvada. So if you guys, Commissioner, Chair, if you're seeing, you know, jets down at 100-foot above-ground level, that's what I think going on. You know, basically, they can use that to transfer from one area to another. It, it doesn't give them a lot of training capability because it's almost like a one-way street. It's not necessarily something they could dogfight in or, you know, swerve outside of that corridor. By rights, they're supposed to be in that corridor, going one way and no engagement in terms of, you know, dogfights or anything like that. So I did want to point that out because, like I said, when I started digging into this, that became a little bit of a surprise to me.
And Jeremy, if I could butt in, we have been seeing aircraft, the small jet fighters coming over the ranch here for the last year or so, at very low altitudes. And they don't stay within that corridor. They, they get outside of it. Some of them will swerve and head over the Santa Rosa's like they're doing some type of maneuvers. But I was wondering, because when I saw the, the outline of the operational area, I'm thinking, well, maybe that's going to change the fact that they are operating not, not inside that area right now, but it looks like that that will continue.
Right, and Chairman, I didn't get into, you know, the observations of planes outside of some of these designated, designated areas or maybe lower than what the current floors are. It doesn't surprise me to hear you say that. I know we, you know, run into the same thing in Churchill County. If, you know, you look at some of the airspace maps and then think back to, you know, to times where I've even been out there on the ground. It, it seems like, you know, the adherence to those guidelines is not always strictly followed, and I know it's been an issue with other counties in the past. You know, I suggested that with this military training route that the county would like to discuss with the Air Force and see if there was an opportunity to maybe move that or at least get it away from that highway corridor. Because I know in August, in your letter, that was one of the things that you pointed out is, you know, it could certainly be distracting when a, a jet comes over at 100 feet above-ground level, especially if it's, you know, flying over or parallel to, you know, a US highway. So I did try to point that out. Really, the theme of, you know, our whole letter is, you know, we really think there should have been more engagement to this point, and we really would like to see more engagement going forward so that we can avoid some of these critical areas. Just a little better example, and then what I'll do is just step up quickly to some of the alternatives. So they actually have three alternatives. And then a couple of sub-alternatives. So I'll start with the sub-alternatives. Alternative, what they're calling A and B are specific to their supersonic operations area. Right now, all supersonic operations are conducted above 30,000 feet. What they're proposing here is with alternative A, they would drop that down to either to 5,000 feet, so pretty significant drop on the supersonic floor. Alternative B would drop it to 10,000 feet. So the supersonic level actually would come down below what their current operating area is above Humboldt County. And then in terms of their alternatives, one, two, and three, they really match those training criteria that I showed you when I kind of started my screen share. So alternative one would drop the, the floor clear down to 100-foot above-ground level. Alternative two would drop it down to 300 feet, and alternative three would drop it down to 500 feet. I don't think there's any surprise. Those alternatives seem to really mirror what they had in those different categories for their low-at training. And so I think, you know, that's why I say, I think that's what they're trying to accomplish is to meet those various categories. I, I was disappointed to see, and I think we pointed this out, one of the alternatives they had considered but eliminated from further detail was actually utilizing other airspace for the low-at training, and they didn't specifically say where that airspace was. Their only real rationale for why they discarded that is because it increased essentially their commute time and then their operation and maintenance cost for their operations. But I don't know that that necessarily warrants excluding an alternative, potentially when you haven't considered all the environmental issues, you know, for stakeholders like Humboldt County. The other thing maybe I would point out before we get into the letter itself is that I know one of the big concerns that you all had back in August and that we certainly had when we were dealing with the Navy expansion in Churchill County is the potential increase for fire starts, primarily from discharge of flares and chaff and things of that nature. They are proposing to leave the floor for flares at 2,000 feet above-ground level and in fire season above 5,000 feet, and that's good. I'm not convinced that they can kind of discard that concern out of hand as they have in the EIS so far, and we've hammered on that point pretty significantly. But they do have some restrictions on flare and chaff. It's a little bit different than what they're proposing on their flight floors. So with that, that's kind of the, the quick and dirty of the things that stood out in my review. Again, the letter's in front of you, and I'm happy to take questions, or, you know, if we need to emphasize some points harder, I'm all ears. No pride in ownership. This is a comment that's coming from you all, so curious to hear your thoughts.
Thank you, Jeremy. Once again, did a great job of putting this, putting a letter together for us. One of the things, correction, that I saw, Jeremy, is this is Highway 95 and not 93, so we would have to make a correction there. And then, you know, to further expand on what you're saying, I don't know why they, they felt there's a need to, to come over into the, along 95 into the Quinn River Valley and into Paradise Valley. It doesn't seem to take in too much Paradise Valley. They start kind of staying north of the ranching and farming community, mostly up in the mountains and ranges is where the, the line seems to be drawn. But particularly in the, in those areas, Paradise, Orvada, Kings River, Paradise Valley. We have, we're, we're probably, we're the largest agricultural area in the state of Nevada. We have a crop dust, crop dusting service that's headquartered here, Morris Ag Air. And I'm, and I'm a little worried of what the consequences could be to, to that business, to the ability of farmers to, to use their crop dusting services, which they do quite extensively from, you know, spring till, till fall, whether it be seeding or spraying or whatever, the use, use of these aircraft is critical, and safety concerns there are troublesome. So that's, that's a couple of points that, that I picked up on. Is there any, any, the rest of the Commissioners, is there anything that you'd like to weigh in on here?
Ms. Chairman, this is Commissioner French. Could I have a couple of comments if I could? I guess first off is, then, I was looking almost with amusement at that map in terms of the training corridors and that type of thing. And, and conducting and being involved with a lot of Endow flights over the years, last 20-plus years. I can't tell you how many times we looked down on aircraft that were underneath a helicopter. There, on quite, quite a few. I actually have videotape of, of two F-15s flying through the bottom of, of Virgin Valley, from Virgin Creek down through the Sheldon, and they went right over the top of us. We actually, they actually did it every morning we were in there, so we actually had a camera waiting for them the next morning. But they were not supposed to be in that canyon because of sheep concerns back at the time, and they were very interested in the tape that we actually had of those aircraft that were flying through the bottom of it. So I guess the bottom line is, is that I, I'm skeptical that, that, with regard to the accuracy of that map, and I, I wouldn't mind telling them that. But the, the other thing is, is that if you look at the supersonic side of it, for instance, that's the supersonic alternative, you know, the 10,000-foot alternative, that puts it right on top of the Santa Rosa's. You know, we, if you think about it, you've got, they're, they're flying right down that corridor, the Santa Rosa's either side of it. And if they're at 10,000 feet, they're actually below the horizon on the Santa Rosa Mountains. The other thing is that if they, if they're flying supersonic over the top of the Montana Mountains, they're right over the top of probably the biggest sage grouse concentration remaining in this part of the Great Basin. So, and supersonic flight has already, you know, Jeremy, you know this, the, the, the data and the studies that have been conducted with regard to bighorn sheep in particular and, and sage grouse in those areas where low-level flights are routine has been documented and is not, is not positive. I, I think that definitely need to, we need to make a, a strong showing along that line, and I'm, I'm really surprised Endow hasn't weighed in any stronger than they have. I think from a standpoint of the safety, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to tie my comments to Commissioner Cherry. The Endow in particular, as well as a number of mining companies, do an awful lot of low-level flights, mostly with helicopters in and around Santa Rosa Mountains, the Montana Mountains. In fact, all the major mountain ranges in, in northern Humboldt County. I have, I have personally been in helicopters on several occasions that were, what were referred to by our pilot as close calls. I think increasing those flights at low level in those areas without significant effort on the part of the, the Air Force to announce their presence in those areas is, is problematic, and I think it's a recipe for disaster. I happen to know for a fact that they can tell you almost within the minute when they're going to be, for instance, in Paradise Valley after they take off from Mountain Home. Their flight, their flight plans are that specific. I have a family member who is a, who's a Colonel in the Air Force who was stationed at Mountain Home and flew F-15s out of there, and he could, he could tell us exactly when he was going, where he was going to be. So I, I, the notion that they are unable to give us a real clear timeline is, I think, is, is not accurate as well. And I think the other thing having to do with flare discharges and the, and the fire season. I really liked them to define what a fire season is, who defines it, who declares it, and what time? If it's, if it's based on the historic fire seasons in Humboldt County, probably most years, that would probably suffice. But on many years, especially since things started warming up, fire seasons extend all the way into November in many times. And if the Air Force declares a, we're outside of a fire season and that they start discharging flares in November or on the other side of it, depending on when the, what the weather looks like that year or the average precip, that's a recipe for a fire cycle going well into November. I think that's all I have for right now. I've got a, I think, I think there, we probably should push, and I hope we receive cooperating agency status with regard to this because I think it's, we've got a lot of, a lot of issues on the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner French. I agree with everything you said. Anyone, anything else? Any other Commissioners have anything?
Yes, Chairman, I agree with what both you and Commissioner French has said, but I want to extend that maybe the, the small planes flying within this area and what it, what it could do and how it could harm the county. You know, not only the wildlife that Commissioner French had talked about, but you have planes that fly in there to help control coyotes at times. You have ranchers that fly in there gathering and looking for cattle, your crop dusting, bird counts and animal counts that take place. And what about the fire aircraft when there is a fire and medical evacuation for people in that area? Has that been addressed?
Yeah, Jeremy, I, I think most of those issues you did touch on. Am I right?
Yeah, and I can, I can touch on that a little bit more, Commissioner, to your point. I think they did a pretty reasonable job of addressing what happens when a fire does start. You know, oftentimes, they'll suspend, you know, their operations and basically let the, the fire, you know, air control take over, and sometimes they support it. So that's the one area that I thought they actually addressed pretty well in the, in the EIS. As far as the other points that you make, they, I, I really felt they had a deficiency. And to Commissioner French's point earlier, one of the spots that it really felt to me like they totally missed the ball was on the issue of sage grouse. And I'll give you an example. They were citing the BLM's COT report from like the, you know, whenever it was, 2012, 2011, and the core area maps that NRCS did. So they don't even mention the state sage grouse plan. They don't mention the state sage grouse mapping. And then, you know, just to further kind of beat on the process side of things, they talk about how they know that there's going to be mitigation actions that need to be carried forward, and those will come out in the final EIS and in the recorded decision. Well, in, in my mind, and all the times that I've dealt with NEPA, typically, you will disclose at least your initial mitigation options within the draft so that folks reviewing the document in a public setting kind of know what you're trying to do to, you know, avoid, minimize and mitigate the impacts. And they totally missed the boat on that. And so the way we approached it in the, in the letter is to say, you know, we don't think you're ready to go to a final EIS. In fact, what we're proposing is that you go to a draft supplemental EIS and disclose some of these potential mitigation alternatives or options that, that you mentioned, but then, you know, don't provide much detail on. Certainly, if, if we're going to push that, we can add a request for co-op. a request for cooperating agency status and an in-person meeting. I don't think that's at all, you know, unfair or inappropriate to raise. So again, I, you know, I think they have some issues in terms of gaps in their analysis and then also some real issues in terms of process. It, it doesn't surprise me a ton. And we saw this with the Navy. The Navy was a little different because they worked with BLM closely on their ground withdrawals. But on the airspace side of things, it's really the Air Force and the FAA. And the challenge that presents is they don't have a lot of background on the ground impacts to some of this. And it also surprised me a little bit because we saw this with the Navy, that they didn't address anything in relation to potential issues with communications or other land activities. And specifically, one of the things that the Navy raised in their EIS is they don't want anything that's going to interfere with their communications or navigation systems. And and one of the points that Eureka County raised that I didn't see addressed in this EIS either, which is important, I think, for the Quinn River Valley and potentially the Paradise Valley, is sometimes when those folks are out operating and a plane flies over, their equipment will will go dead. In fact, I've seen that happen in my vehicle where the GPS navigation just goes blank and says it's offline. And that's one thing for me driving down Highway 50. But if someone's, you know, out there with an ag implement on a laser level or a GPS navigation tracker or something, that that can be problematic. So, you know, there's a lot here that I think they just missed, largely because they probably don't have much background on it. And it's not dissimilar to what we saw with the Navy. So I'm happy to add more to the letter. Like I said, you know, our suggestion in the cover was that they go to a draft supplemental because we don't think they're ready for a final EIS.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Yeah, I do too. So Jeremy, in regards to what Commissioner Tipton was talking about and, you know, ranchers, I know two or three ranchers around here that use aircraft to move their cattle, to check on their cattle, as long as, as well as Endow. Will that type of activity be prohibited in this area?
It was pretty silent on it, Chairman. And we tried to hit that, I think, both in the cover letter and in our document specific attachments. You know, they, they really didn't acknowledge a whole lot in in regards to what I kind of called any sort of, you know, commercial air use for monitoring and management. And whether that's on the wildlife side or whether that's on the livestock side, there just wasn't a whole lot of analysis on that. I think that's an area they just missed.
Okay. Anyone else? Not hearing any, anyone else has anything to say, then I guess we need to take a vote on this. And somebody like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner French. I would move to approve the Humboldt County Commission's comment letter to airspace optimization and readiness draft environmental impact statement and to be signed by the Chairman Ron Cherry.
Okay. And that will include the one correction that I brought up on the Highway 95 instead of 93. Okay?
Yes. I amend my.
Okay.
As well as the attachment, Commissioner?
Okay. All right, the motion is on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
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 That's Commissioner Haas votes aye as well. He's online. So motion passes unanimously. When does this have to be in, Jeremy?
Today. And so what I'll do, Michelle, I think you're there in the audience. And Dave, what I'll do is update the letter quick, pull kind of my header off it, update the date, the highway. And then I'll let you all put it on on letterhead and I can help with delivery. So.
Okay. Dave, I'm, I'll be coming through town today. I can either sign it, I guess, DocuSign or stop and sign it. So just probably close to noon when I come through, you know, if it's ready, I'll, I'll give you a text or a call.
Okay, yeah, if you're coming in, just plan on stopping by here and we'll have it for you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Haas.
Commissioner Haas.
I don't have a copy of the letter that you've been talking about. I don't know why. I've got six pages this morning. I've been on the internet all weekend looking for information on this. So if somebody would send me a copy of that, I sure appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Haas, is that the the letter that that we all received this morning? Or, or the one, there's, it wasn't included in the attachments to on the agenda?
I have the one from August 9, 2021. Is that the one we're speaking of?
I know. So Chair, or excuse me, Commissioner Haas, Dave Mendiola. So yeah, on the agenda, there's both the current one that Jeremy that we sent out with the agenda. But I'll send you an updated one. And there's also a supplement that Jeremy referenced, which is, looks like it's categorized by different sections. So I'll send both of those to you. Make sure you have both of them.
I did get six pages of the draft at about 7:15 this morning. I haven't seen the letter.
Okay, we'll get that to you.
Okay. All right. If there's nothing else, then we'll go back, public comment. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to make comment? Not appearing that there is. So I'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you to the rest of the Commissioners. See you, see you later. Let the rain keep coming. Maybe it'll drown some crickets.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Talk to you later.
Thank you, everybody. Bye.